This South Beach School District Board Workshop to Order. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. Director Jackson.
Thank you. South Beach School District does its work. We live and we steward the land of the Coast Salish peoples, the Snohomish tribe, Stillagomish, Suquamish, the tribes collectively associated with the Chulalup tribes. We have a written land acknowledgement that I invite you to read in full on our website or on the wall in this room. But I want to take this time today to thank a community member who received an invitation from board members to bring some resources to share this evening on a table at the edge of the boardroom. These are books about the Coast Salish peoples and a handout with about 10 copies. So if there's a handout remaining, please feel free to take one at the end of the evening that point you towards resources that are available through the Snow Isle Public Libraries about and by the people of the Coast Salish tribes. So I want to thank the community member, Charlene. Thank you very much for bringing these resources in to share with the public at this meeting. And if there's somebody who wishes to see the display or the handout and is unable to be in the room with us this evening, you can reach me. My email address through the school board is majackson@sw.wednet.edu. And I can put you in touch with this resource list. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, this is a board workshop, which means that we are inviting community comment and participation on the items that are on the agenda. So we'll move on to our first item on the agenda. We have three policies we're looking at here tonight. The first one is our policy one. We have listed that the first one's 1400, the meeting conduct and types of meetings. Since we've been discussing the the professional communication standards, I'd like to suggest we continue doing that. Is everyone good with that?
Sure, I just have a request. Oh, you're already on it, Kristy. I was gonna say, because I'm locked down on my computer. So if I could see it on the screen, that would be helpful.
So we'll go to policy 5161, professional communication standards. This is Dr. Moshe, do you want to talk about what has been done thus far?
Thank you, and I actually am going to ask Jay Marie to jump in with me. But the board looked at this policy a while ago, and it's a policy that came to the board from WASDA. And it was initiated by districts across the state who were dealing with difficult circumstances in board meetings and requested that WASDA look into civility policy, which is the alternate name for this policy. And so our school board started looking at it as well. We have a variety of reasons for doing so, not the least of which was is what's going on across our nation in terms of the the lack of ability for folks to get along and and talk about difficult topics in a way that allows everyone to hear each other. So with that being said, the board asked the superintendent to get input into this policy. And I asked Jay Marie to assist me with that in getting every single staff member to have an opportunity to provide some input. And we're here tonight to share that and hopefully to gather some more direction and input from the board. So I'm going to turn it over to Jay Marie to lead us through if that's okay with the board. Thank you, Jay Marie. Can't hear you, so hang on a sec.
No, that was me, I'm sorry. Before I jump in, I have a clarifying question. Since there are multiple policies on tonight's agenda, how much time do you have to devote to? What's our time window for this?
I mean, ideally, I'd like to be done by eight or 8:30, but and so probably dividing relative, the majority on this and then or half on this and a quarter on the other two. That seems really, so that would be it's 6:45 now, so that would be an hour and 45 minutes. So I don't know, call it an hour on this one and 45 minutes to split between the other two.
You got it. Okay, so to put this, your work with this policy within the context of the work that we began to do together back at your September 13th meeting. You all, in addition to wanting to, you know, talk about how to better engage around controversial and contentious topics, you know, managing conflict with dignity was one of the ways that you all framed that for me is is what you wanted to work on. Build your skills as a board and and clarify your expectations as a for your larger community. And we talked a little bit about the idea that doing so is actually that the motivation for why you all are doing this is is to build your community's capacity to be able to get into these challenging and sometimes polarizing topics that the the intention here is not to squelch diversity of perspective or to or or to eliminate controversial issues. In fact, it's quite the opposite by building your your collective clarity around what your expectations are for yourselves and each other. And by building your skills at engaging in these topics with with those positive constructive behaviors, it actually increases the odds that the people in your community who hold a breadth of perspective on challenging issues will feel comfortable bringing their perspective to you. And so that you can really, as you make decisions, you'll have a greater breadth of perspective to better understand how best to make decisions that represent the will of your community. So I want to, you know, you have said that to me in multiple ways, both in the planning meetings with your superintendent and also in the sessions on the 13th and in conversations since then. And so I want to make sure that that is is clear to anyone who's watching this and to folks who might under want to understand why and how you're bringing up this topic. So it also
Before we move on, one of the pieces of feedback I saw common in the staff was like, why? Question mark, did something happen? Question mark. And I think Jay Marie, you just summarized the why like so elegantly. I wish I was could have like taken notes fast enough, because if you read the first paragraph, it's very, its scope is very limited to employee interactions and the academic environment. But you spoke of something broader, which is really like democracy. Democracy as applied to the public schooling system. And so I think the I would like to see the the final edit of this intro paragraph capture in part a distilled version of of what you just said so well.
And luckily for you, Director Green here, and we're recording, so we'll have a transcript of what she said. If I can just add to that as well, because that was one of the comments that I saw stand out in the feedback. And I want to take us back to what I think it was before the pandemic, wasn't it, Dr. Moshe? When I suggested we put together a civility policy? And it really came from watching how the public were treating staff members. And so what I noticed in the notes was that staff members appeared to kind of interpret this policy as, you know, their their expectations in conversing with the board or their expectations when conversing with administrators or superintendents. And I would really want the messaging to go out specifically to the staff that this was based on the board's observations of how they were being treated and wanting to put some boundaries around that.
Lovely. And in a few minutes, I am planning to facilitate an opportunity for you all to reflect to reflect on what you saw in that staff feedback, so we can elevate up what are the themes that really resonated with you all. So we are going to dig into that just a little bit. And in fact, I just have one other thing I want to bring up before, and then we're going to jump right into that. And the the other piece I want to bring up is, you know, here, this is the second session that I'm here with you. There will likely be a third session. All of this is stemming from a request that you all made last spring to have some professional development as school board members to deepen your communication skills. And you had a variety of kind of subtopics under that related to communication skills. And so I want to reflect back to you that the way you have gone about navigating the consideration of this policy is an excellent modeling of a key aspect of communication skills. And that is the the other side of communicate, well, I communication is really a two way street. We often think of the word communicating as more the what we're saying. You know, what is the message that the district is sending out? What are the words that the leaders are saying? As and so we think of that as communicating. I believe that it is equally important to attend to the ways in which you listen, that that is the that communication requires both sharing of perspective and listening to perspective, that that's how you create a a complete cycle of communications. And within that listening side, when we think about listening through the lens of leadership and organizationally listening, have observed that generally speaking, school leaders as compared to maybe other industries, school leaders tend to come into this work, whether it's you're the those of you who are elected leaders or those of you who are administrators, come into this work with a pretty by a pretty deep bias towards public service and wanting to represent and serve the common good. And so oftentimes, what I find is that school leaders are actually pretty good at listening. And, you know, I'm painting with a very broad brush stroke here, like, of course, there are some school leaders that this is a particular area of of skill development that they can work on. But generally speaking, if I'm comparing a school leader to just a general average person or someone that I'm working with in a different in the, say, the power industry or a different area of of society, find that school leaders tend to be biased towards wanting to hear what the community wants and generally doing their best to make decisions that are consistent with what is heard. Where I think school leaders often fall down or drop the ball on this has to do with reflecting back the listening that you have done. And I kind of think of this as closing the loop on the listening. I think that there is kind of a cycle that happens that needs to happen so that the community does know that. And I am the community, I mean that in the broadest possible sense, your internal community of of employees and students and families and external community of non, you know, community members who are not affiliated with the school district in a in a more formal way, that all of those people deserve to know that that you cared about what they had to say and that if they took the time to share input with you, that it influenced your thinking. And so I think of that listening cycle as having a handful of steps. And that is, it's incumbent on us to get really good at describing the why, just some of the things you you two of you just spoke about very nicely. Is explain to people, what's the, what's kind of the basic information so that we people are starting from some shared groundwork? So basic information about, in this case, the draft policy and why it's in front of you. Then you go out and you do some listening. You say, here's the draft. What do you think of it? And you ask the people who are going to be most affected by the policy to weigh in on it. And that's pretty typical. That's actually, we're talking about, these are the first couple of things that I think we tend to do really well. It's the following steps that tend to get forgotten, and that is that then you need to synthesize, here's what we heard. And then you also need to reflect back, and here's how it affected our thinking. That's where by and if you get really good at saying, here's what we heard, and here's how it affected our thinking, that is how you demonstrate to to your community that you are responsive leaders, that you continue to empower a democratic process. You you help people see that showing up to a board meeting or sending you an email or attending a staff meeting and sharing their thoughts in that staff meeting, that those things, those exertions of our time, those that that sharing of myself and my opinion and my perspective, that it's worth my time to do that with you because you were open to think differently about it. One of my previous bosses used to call it being vulnerable to the legitimacy of someone else's perspective. Being vulnerable to the legitimacy of someone else's perspective. It doesn't necessarily mean you will change your mind. You might hear someone else's perspective. You might listen respectfully and and honestly with an open mind. And you might still come back to believing that your initial thinking is consistent, you remain consistent with your initial thinking. But you have, you have listened in the spirit that you are open to the possibility that what they say to you will change your thinking. And by by circling back to tell people, here's what we heard, and here's how it influenced our thinking, you are basically teaching people to be willing to give you their input. And and when I say that second, that that other piece about, you know, here's how it influenced my thinking, it can be very subtle. It might be, well, what you shared, you know, the input that we heard on such and such fell into these three themes. We believe that the original draft addresses those themes well, and so we're moving that forward. Or it emphasized for us the importance of such and such within the draft or whatever the case may be. But you, even if what you heard affirms your own thinking, you reflect that. And then the last stage is to then say, and now here's what's next. So we started out here. We asked our community in the following ways. We heard the following things that influenced us to think differently in this way, and here's where we're going from here. And so I think that's how we close the listening, the loop on listening and kind of complete that cycle. And that's and where you are in that process is that you, for a number of reasons that have been articulated already, felt that this was an important clarification, that bringing this policy forward would help provide clarity around common expectations for how folks will interact related to school district and business and matters related to school operations. You got a draft from your professional association who is tasked with developing these kinds of drafts based on Washington law, best practices and examples they see from other states across the country. So they WASDA does this as a matter of of routine, and it's one of the services that they provide for your membership in the organization. You got the draft, you gave it some initial eddings, including changing the title and suggesting a few other edits. And then you ran it through your internal audiences to get their perspective. And so now where we are on this is it's time for you to be vulnerable to the legitimacy of others' perspective. So you all had all of the content of the meeting. So your superintendent organized a period, a portion of a of an in-service day was dedicated to staff groups getting together at their elementary, secondary district office and transportation kind of sub-organizations to reflect on four questions related to this draft. Essentially, those four questions were, what do you like most about the draft? What do you dislike about the draft? Or what do you think needs to be changed? Did this draft raise any questions for you that you feel were not answered in the draft? And the fourth question is, is there anything else that you would like the board to know? And to make good use of our time here tonight, what I'd like to ask you in the room to do. And so I'm going to kind of walk through a process briefly before we jump into it. So I'll get, you know, go through it. The process I'd like to suggest is that you break up into two groups so that you can really talk amongst yourselves and not be kind of stilted by that, the formality of taking turns, but to I to share with each other. And I'd like the two groups to be a nice mix of you. So I'd like it to include board members and paid administrators. And I'd like the student reps to be, because it's going to be two groups. So I'd like one student in each of the groups so that you have a well-rounded, each group is as well-rounded as possible. And I'd like to give you maybe seven or eight minutes to reflect on the first two questions and see what the themes are you heard from it, what people liked most about the draft and what people disliked most or liked least about it. And then what I'd like to do is then have one person from each group. And, you know, we'll be a little less formal about that. But if primarily one person can reflect back, our group noticed the following themes about what people like most and what people disliked most. And then and will both groups will report out. And then we'll divide up again, well, same groups will just divide up again into your separate groups. And we'll review and look for themes in the second two questions, the what questions were raised. And if there's anything else that the staff wanted the board to consider. And we'll report out, and then we can talk together about what that will. I've got some thoughts about how to go from having heard those themes to then updating the draft accordingly. Before we break into groups, does anybody have any questions or suggested revisions to that approach for how we will dig into the staff feedback that you have?
I have a question, and we are fortunate to have several members of the public present with us today. And I'm just wondering how they can engage, if they can engage in this exercise with us. If you can give some tips to support their participation or if they're just here as witnesses.
Well, so would ask, what's your sense? Because every board's a little different. And so is this a formal board meeting or is this a work session? Because I think that affects how kind of the rules of order typically go. Can someone give some insight into that?
This is a formal workshop, which means that we invite and request the input of community on items on the agenda. This is an item on the agenda. I'd love to hear what the community members have to say about it.
Then I would ask the community members to divvy themselves up roughly equally between the two groups and to participate in the conversation. If unless if if you all are comfortable with that, that's that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions before you all break up into two groups? And I would suggest that the two groups kind of move to separate parts of the room so that you're not talking over each other.
A similar question, but for people who are attending via Zoom. Is it possible to include them?
I don't know how many there are attending on Zoom.
Think what we, I think what I would recommend for folks who are on Zoom is that, you know, we will take a little bit of a kind of a break while you're having your conversations. And I would encourage folks on Zoom to either chime in. Is the chat function turned on? Are we able to?
Q and A function is turned on.
Okay, so so when you all report out, that will be a good opportunity. If that then raises some thoughts for folks in the who are participating remotely, we can chime in via the chat, the Q and A function.
Absolutely, thank you.
You bet.
And if you are watching online, you can look at what we're talking about on the agenda that is online on the board website.
And does that document include the follow-up pages where it includes the beautiful? So those of you who are online, you can see the full unedited staff response to those four questions in that document that the board chair is referencing. In the spirit of time, I'd like to give you eight minutes as separate groups. It is sorry, my time, I have a full screen here, so I cannot see the time. It is, is it 7:05?
Yes.
All right, so then we'll come back at 7:13 as well.
One thing that, oh, sorry. One thing we also noticed was that many of the people really liked all the details, and then others of the people thought it was too prescriptive and too wordy. So that tells me we're probably somewhere near a happy medium, but there might be some work to do. Not cutting out details, but focusing in on them.
And perhaps looking for, there were a couple of places where repetition was pointed out. And I think one of the details in the document, even they laid out, here's a, here's some like maybe five or six bullets that really said, here's where this particular bit of content is repeated, suggest, you know, refining it by just having it in the one place. So that might be the the response to that aspect of it being lengthy might be about, you know, as you said, you you might be at the right place in terms of level of detail, but may still have some opportunities to reduce redundancy.
I also really appreciated the feedback around being careful wherever subjectivity comes in and using this opportunity to remove terms that could be applied differently to people of different identities, backgrounds, et cetera.
I would also draw your attention a couple of folks. This was something that was shared in the document, and it really was important to me as someone who focuses on communications and community engagement. I appreciated the clarity of this being focused on the behavior of how the communication is happening and that it is agnostic to the topic that it specifically says, you know, that this is not to eliminate the discuss, you know, controversial issues, you know, just by the very nature of bringing up and dealing with a controversial issue does not mean that that in some way is in violation of this policy, but that it's the manner in which we approach these more contentious issues that we're seeking to clarify our expectations of ourselves and each other. So I think that's an important point to continue to protect and frankly, to communicate. You know, we've talked about that as a, you know, an aspect of the communication skills that you all as board members and leaders of the organization that you build your capacity to be able to interrupt people who are behaving in an unprofessional or disrespectful or uncivil, you know, however, we might frame that, you know, not behaving at their best as they try and bring forward an issue that you get really good at separating out the the need to interrupt a disrespectful or or harassing or an attacking behavior without squelching a diversity of perspective to say, we continue to, you know, we we want to give in in giving people grace to recognizing that we are a learning organization. And that the idea, when you interrupt someone because their behavior is not appropriate or is inconsistent with this policy, that it's not to say, well, the whole conversation is done now, but is to say, we're going to go ahead and pause this now. We're going to interrupt this inappropriate behavior. But there's always the opportunity for you to go collect yourself, you know, kind of remind yourself to behave at your at your best and then come back and reengage in the topic. But staying focused on the issue rather than on personal attacks or whatever the particular violation of the of the policy might have been. And so that, as someone else already said, you know, the procedures that go along with this and the and the kind of the the spirit in which this is implemented will be just about as important as kind of the letter to of, you know, the the spirit of the law is about as important as the letter of the law in this instance. Like to give you all the opportunity to break back into your two different groups. You sort of already, I think, started talking about a little bit more of kind of the the, you know, did this policy raise any questions? And are there other things that the the folks who are giving you feedback would like for the board to know? But we're we're kind of jumping into a big chunk of feedback and doing it as kind of efficiently as we can. But I, so I don't want to cut off the opportunity to kind of circle back to anything that that needs your reflection. So I'd like to give you all another eight minutes in your two groups to focus primarily on questions three and four. But if you also feel like you missed anything in terms of the strong themes around likes or dislikes, go ahead and raise lift that up as well. But we are at 7:23, so we will go to 7:31. Go ahead and raise, lift that up as well, but, um, we are at seven twenty-three, so we will go to seven thirty-one. We are at eight minutes, so I invite y'all to wrap up your group conversations and come on back together.
Okay, we're back.
Excellent. Y'all are even more efficient. The second go around. Nicely done, my friends. Alright, so who would like to, um, share out? What did you notice?
Hang on a second, we're still gabbing.
Yep.
Okay.
Not quite as efficient as you thought. Yeah, uh, the other group went first. I, I wanted to mention a couple of things that stood out for us among these questions, which were, what about the students? Should the students be included in this? And our, our thought was yes. Uh, both to. Protect them and to protect staff. Uh, and then the other one was, how do we hold non-staff accountable? And how do we tell non-staff?
Um, one of our things was that we saw that it was in the five thousand series, which is personal relations, I think. Instead of in the zero, zero, zero series, which is for community relations, which could be playing into the, um. Everyone asking why this policy is being implemented now of all things. And then also, um, we asked how the policy would be enforced and without bias is something that we found as a common theme.
And just to add to what Carter said, the, uh, the idea that it's a foundational policy. And that, um, what occurred to me and, and it was mentioned, you know, the Cougar Code and the Orca Code. They could be procedural, like if we're holding students accountable for their behavior. And we're holding adults accountable for their behavior, we're all similar in, in that. And so. Those school rules can flex, which is why I'm suggesting procedural. But it could be incorporated in the policy that schools have. Similar ways of being that are incorporated in the procedures.
I really like the idea of shifting it out of personnel and into the, uh, seri- the planning. Yeah.
Our, our group had a, had a similar discussion. Um, it started as a question is like, uh, on the spectrum of, um, flexible to rigid, like where should this policy be? And we thought that for it to be a foundation like you're describing, it, it needs to be flexible so that it can be. Adapted to the, the different constituencies and ages of students. And it, uh, uh, it strikes me that it's sort of similar to how, uh, the district goals flow down into the school improvement plans. Like in different, uh, in ways that are age appropriate and context appropriate. This policy, if written correctly, should be able to do that for every setting and constituent group.
Beautiful. Any other, um, reflections, anything that y'all noticed in terms of themes to, to bring up while you're together?
The need to address the power dynamics. So there was a comment about like, what if your conflict is with your supervisor?
And so to clarify, how do you, how do you get support? Under those circumstances, because those kinds of processes do exist, but they need to be tied clearly to this.
That, that definitely feels like something that would need to be laid out in, uh, procedure is how you do get support if the person you're. Uh, having the issue with is the person you would normally reach up to, uh, for help with this. Yeah.
And it could just be as simple as a referral to, people have collective bargaining agreements and we have personnel, um. Uh, expectations and so on. So I wonder if it's a reference to it as opposed to trying to define.
Redefine it.
Eyes are right. Exactly. Redefine it.
Cause there's HR supports, there's collective bargaining, there are places, so it, and oftentimes your policies do that, right? They point then to. Here's additional information that can be helpful. Um, and there might be an invitation in this to, to double check those places that this would point to, to make sure that there is the clarity. Uh, uh, around those details. Um. Want to just chime in and speak for a moment to, you know. Um, I think it's really important that we remember the word accountability, because I think that is an important word that's in here. And I think that. We keep that always within the context again. Um, and I know I said this before, so I'm kind of hitting the same note. Um, but, uh, that this is a learning organization. So it's, this always is in the context of. Um, the idea that skills, that, um, that behaviors and, uh, communication. Uh, strategies, those are all skills that we continue, that we build as children, as students, and that we also continue to build as adults. And so. Um, this idea of accountable accountability is within that context of being a learning organization, that it's, it's not meant to. Um, you know, squash someone down, but it is meant to hold them, hold them and each other, right? That, that, this is something that we do. We hold each other accountable to the standards of professional and respectful conduct. And that we do it in the spirit of interrupting. Poor skills. And giving people the opportunity to then regroup and then practice. More positive skills, skills that are spelled out in the, in the policy. Um, so accountability, right? Sometimes we think of accountability like kind of having somebody under our thumb, and that's not at all the spirit of this. Um, policy or the nature of the dialogue that led to this policy, that this is about, um. Making sure there's clarity and shared expectations for how we will treat one another so that we can. Deal with difficult, um, issues in productive, um, respectful ways. Um, and to the idea that different constituent groups. You know, how would we hold an external constituent, a, a member of an external constituent group? How would we hold them accountable? Um, to these expectations? I think. It comes back to that idea of those of you who might be on the receiving end of, um, someone who is. Um, engaging in disrespectful or harassing behavior to interrupt that behavior. Reference this policy and the shared expectations that we have for how we will be with one another and how we will deal with difficult and, uh, highly emotionally charged issues. Um, and then make sure to close that interaction with the invitation to come back, you know, to, to make sure that you're always being clear that this is not to stop the content of. A person's concern, but to ensure that, that, that that content is shared in a manner that is respectful and focused on the issues and not on attacking the people. That, that we keep it focused on behaviors. Um, not on people. So, um, I am mindful of kind of timing. And so. What I want to ask is how do you all tend to? What are your norms as a board for how you incorporate feedback like this in order to bring back a second draft? Is this something that a couple of you as board members would volunteer to work with the superintendent to, um, refine the draft incorporating the feedback? And the dialogue that was shared here tonight? Um, what's your norms?
So we have, we, we do one of two things. That's, or that's one of the things that we have done. And the other one is discuss it in the workshop to work out the language. Between ourselves at the workshop, but this seems like something that is more involved and would do well with a smaller group looking at it. And bringing something back at our next board meeting.
So.
Yeah, agreed. I think, um, the. The amount of feedback we got was so much bigger than usual, and I'm saying that as a good thing. It was so great that we got so much feedback, but that just makes it harder to edit the policy live. With like, by all, by all of us.
So do we have a couple of board members who'd be interested in working on this? And I include student board members in this invitation as well.
I'm happy to help and I would invite Director Greenhare to help too, because you've been doing a lot of work on this piece.
I accept. Excellent. Just the two people I wanted working on it.
Like me to, um, do that with you and meet with you to do that work? Okay.
Yeah.
I can, uh, I'll schedule something with the two of you and we can refine it and then bring it back to the full board. Um.
I'm very free after the fifteenth.
Okay. Uh, we also have, uh, retreat opportunities where we might be able to, um. At the WASTA conference, we can sneak away rather than schedule another meeting.
And if the timing works out, I'd love to get a student rep, uh, or two engaged in that also.
Hell, be it was to.
Excellent.
Zero, zero, two, zero, 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 two is available. It's. And so.
Okay. And, and I just want to say it made my nerdy heart happy that y'all caught that. Idea that it, the, that the placement of the policy. Uh. Is a context that helps shape how people perceive the purpose of the policy. And I think that was an important. Um, and, uh, an important thought. And so I'm glad. And considered it in that light, and I really appreciate that, that y'all did.
Okay, we settled on this policy. Jay Marie?
I believe you have excellent next steps. If it turns out that I can be supportive. Um. Of you as you gather, I would be delighted to, to support you as well, either in the meeting or if you would like an extra set of eyes, once you've. Identified a round, a round of edits, whatever it feels appropriate, know that I, um, remain interested and engaged in this work.
And I'm not sure if it was clear to the board, but I want to make it clear that Jay Marie facilitated the work that we did with staff around this policy. So she was familiar with their feedback directly. So it helps in terms of the context of, um, tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to, or move back to policy fourteen hundred, uh, meeting conduct, order of business and quorum, uh, meetings. The intention with this. Jay Marie, I don't know if you had. Insight or input into the other two policies we're looking at. Thank you, Dr. Moshe.
Thank you for adding.
Conduct, yeah.
Did not have, um, direct, um, uh, review of these, but what I'd like to do is just. Did not have direct review of these, but what I'd like to do is just continue to listen in, because I think it's relevant to, I think they all interrelate in those ways.
Happy to have you here. Just didn't want to ignore the fact that you, that we were moving on.
Thank you for that reminder. So the intention with this one was mostly, we've been using another form of meeting retreat, and it has not been codified in our types of meetings. So that was the main thrust of this one. There will be some, once we have 0002 locked in, there'll be some overlap there with the public comment section there that we'll want to reference. But in general, this is mostly about types of meeting. Anyone want to start off discussion on that or?
Can I, can I just share an observation about a type of meeting that isn't represented and my perspectives on why it is a type of meeting that's not represented? We've heard the question of, you know, when can I ask a question on a non-agendized topic and have some discourse around that with the board? And the answer, in my personal opinion, is when a topic is raised to the board's attention and it seems to be relevant enough to enough members of our community that we do need to bring it to a discussion. We then agendize it and offer opportunities like these workshops to have that discourse with the public. And as volunteers and as our paid staff who have finite time and energy, we all have to choose what we prioritize to spend our time on. And my personal opinion is that if every community member who wants to have a dialogue about a topic, were given a forum for that discussion at, at a meeting, we might run short on time to address all the very many interests and curiosities and concerns and complaints that arise. So I would just encourage that the public should know that in addition to these meeting formats that are laid out, there's the opportunity to email the board of directors with a question to receive an answer to that question. And if it's a question that's recurring or, you know, of interest to our district, it will be agendized by board members when and if it fits into the many priorities that our district has. Thank you.
And we also have a communication ability with every single administrator and the superintendent. So if people have relevant questions, that's also another way to get it to the board level is to bring it up. And if it's not something that's already addressed in policy or that requires the attention of the board, we can bring it to the board. I think people get confused about the board doing its business in public and a public forum. And that, we can't seem to get that across as much as we'd like to, because this is not, this is the legislative body of the school district. It's not, it's like going down to Olympia and walking into the chamber and saying, well, but I want to talk about this and you're not talking about that. How do I get my needs addressed? And so this governmental body called school board does its business in public. If the school board wants to have a public forum where it's an open discussion or a Q and A like you did last year, where people can either send their questions or come with their questions, that is very different than the board's business in public. And that concept seems to get lost sometimes.
Well, and I think, and this may be me projecting, but I think part of the issue is actually how open we are to discussion at workshops on the topics on the agenda, because that is not standard for a school board. That is nowhere near standard for a school board. And it's one of the things I like most. So that's not a negative thing, me saying it's not standard. So I do think it is important to, that we lay out the types of meetings. And I think that this is the right place to do that. So we can clarify some of that. And also to provide opportunities for that Q and A. There weren't a whole lot of questions at the last one, but it might be something that builds if we do it on a semi-regular basis.
I would be in favor of that, to provide the more free form, an outlet for the more free form to maintain the structure of the workshop and business meeting. So we can say, if we can, if we were to replay the interaction with the community member who, who had the question before the meeting started, you know, if we had the Q and A style meeting on a recurring basis, regardless of how frequent, just to know that there will be another one, because it's recurring, we could have said, you know, this is how workshops go, this is how business meetings go. And it sounds like the Q and A session, the next Q and A session is a perfect place for you.
I would always just also just urge us to remember as a board that we are volunteers and we do need rest. And many of us are community members who are busy in other ways, as is, as are a lot of the folks that are in this room right now. So I think, looking through that lens at, you know, how we can best serve the community with the limited time and resources that we have.
Very important. Self-care is a leadership choice.
So to bring it back to this policy, it seems to me that there's actually a space to insert meeting types between the quorum and voting and the meeting conduct and order of business section, just to lay out the types of meetings, which is to say retreats, workshops, business meetings and executive session. And so, because I think that it is valuable to have those in our policies just to refer members of the community to.
I might add a fifth of optional forums and special topic meetings. You know, not to say that we need to have them at any particular intervals, but if a policy says we meet in these four ways and in only these four ways, it might constrain us when we need to have a, a community dialogue or when we want to have a question and answer session or a deeper dive into something outside the workshop format. Or perhaps the language could simply be, you know, we, we have these four types of meetings, including but not limited to.
These regular meetings included, and there may be additional meetings as needed. Yeah.
Or these are the four types of meetings, and this does not preclude the board from holding public forum.
There you go. This seems like a pretty straightforward change. I would be happy to take a, take a swing at it if folks are interested. Okay. And I'll get something to you shortly. Anything else on 1400? Okay, we'll move on to our third one, the update on the policy 3241, student discipline.
Thank you. So the, just a bit of backstory on this, the board reviewed this a few months ago. And we realized that we didn't have input from all constituent groups. And so Dr. Moshe was kind enough to gather input from her leadership team, because they are the ones responsible for creating, building, age-appropriate, building discipline structures. And so this version right here that we're looking at right now reflects the input that Dr. Moshe gathered. And then a follow-up meeting that her and I had to go over the input and sort of just, and smooth it out. So the, the, the initial changes up in the top are just some wording to align this, align the intro of this policy with our 0001, you know, equity lens. A lot of these changes are just adding guardians. And the, the meat of it is down a little lower. Yeah, this, so right here, the change here, Dr. Moshe realized that, you know, the superintendent is ultimately accountable for ensuring that the appropriate professional development takes place. Now, the superintendent can delegate to school principals, which was the original wording. But ultimately, the superintendent is the one responsible. And a lot of the wording here is to align it with best practices and, you know, research-based and positive behavior. So with the restorative justice and culture of care language. This next paragraph with the grievance process, it simply points to the procedure that outlines the grievance process. Yeah, so this, this added paragraph mentions the data summit and prescribes the types of data expected at the data summit so that the board can periodically monitor the effectiveness of discipline in anonymized ways. Yeah, I think that's it. Questions, comments, concerns, discussions?
Very nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be interested in hearing whether our students have had an opportunity to look at this draft or have any comment. And that they represent a stakeholder group that I would really love to hear from.
Well, as a student, I'm really glad that we're looking at the professional understanding of this and how this impacts the student and the research behind it. So that's really nice to see that it's not just words. There's a background behind it with actual research and actual data to support the policies that impact the students.
I like the, oh, I like the paragraph on the discipline data in the annual summit. I think using data is always a good thing. And I'm glad that's being incorporated into discipline, which always hasn't been in some places.
Thank you. Principal comments?
Probably about five years ago, the state of Washington really did sweeping changes about student conduct. And we were instantly, right away, our district adopted that. And this policy really doesn't change any of our practices that we are currently doing, which I think is good news. And again, I think most of you know that we're required to give data to the state also annually. So again, the board has asked for discipline data before, and I'm more than happy to provide that.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Yeah. And there's a part that's unchanged that alludes to what Mr. Patton is mentioning.
I'll echo similar to John, but also it's a really delicate process and experience. And we, we provide, we, I tried, I work with John and Paul and Suzie and anybody I can confidentially have dialogue with to ensure bias is, is not present, that it's appropriate to the student and any confounding factors. And that with restorative justice, that harm is being repaired. And that looks different case to case. And it's, this supports that process and how we conduct that in a confidential but supportive way so that student learns some outcomes of, of impact. And there's so much common language to that now that bringing in guardians and bus drivers or anybody that had a part of that experience gets, gets a participation in that process so that consequence or whatnot is presented. But then there's also this focus on repairing harm and what that looks like. And it's different in each case. And this feels like it supports it.
Community members who are present or Ms. Richards?
Just real quickly, I wanted to add that even at the youngest age, that's what's exciting for me when I look at this policy, policy to see that even young children are beginning to understand, just like you were just telling me a story from the playground, where children are learning to come together and, and begin that process at a really young age.
The ALE program has done wonders with those students that are in the classes. My daughter-in-law went to pick up her first grader last year. And the kids usually play about 20 minutes or so after school has been let out on the playground. And the kids were just kind of going all over and not doing anything together. They all came back to a meeting place. And the kids were talking over each other and yelling over each other until one child yelled out waterfall. That was a code word. All of the kids, these first graders and second graders stopped the yelling, got into a circle. And each one took a turn saying what they think they should play together and what the rules should be. Each one, they went around the circle and each one said what they thought the game should be. They compromised, they came together, they agreed what the game should be and what the rules should be. And then they went off and played.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you all for providing input. Is there any other comments or questions on this? I did note one thing, there's a page break in page three that leaves a bunch of white space, but other than that, it looks great. Sorry. After the accountability and data reporting. Yeah. And it isn't a policy problem, it's just a look pretty problem. Thank you all for putting in the work on putting this together. I think that this one's ready for voting as is. All right, that's our agenda. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thank you, Jay Marie.